I'd like to call the meeting to order, please. I'd like Mr. Billy Wayne Chestine to lead us in prayer.
Let's everybody pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this privilege of being together here tonight. We thank you, Jesus, for all the things that you've done for us, for giving your life to our sins, Heavenly Father, and for salvation for us, Heavenly Father. We love you and we thank you for all that. Lord, as we gather here tonight, we pray that good decisions will be made for each and everyone. We ask you, Lord, to lead us and guide us as we go forward. Help us, Heavenly Father, to work and try to see behind each and everything. But most of all, Heavenly Father, we pray that we'll be in your will as we go forward. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
It's good to see everyone here tonight on a rainy, damp night. It's getting cold, too, so thank y'all for coming. I appreciate you being here tonight. We'll start off with approval of the previous minutes. I'll need a motion and a second on motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and the next item of business would be approval of the bills for February payment. I would need a motion and a second on that.
I'll make a motion that the bills for February be paid.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? A motion carries. Okay, and new business, the business license ordinance, the first reading of that. While we're waiting on that, on that ordinance to be read, we talked quite a long time ago about the bridges and the options that we have for those. And we had written a letter to Mr. Grant Waldrood, one of the gentlemen that was here from the G-Doc. And the two options that are on the table right now is the temp bridge that would be at the park or removing the old trust bridge and replacing it with a new bridge, something similar to the one that they just redid up at Ascot, their Schalford Bridge. With that being said, the, just in my opinion, now this is just me, I like the one about the trust bridge. Now, I understand that there's a lot of feelings about that old bridge being there for as long as it's been here, over 100 years, but just looking at it from the city's viewpoint, as far as financially, for the city, in my opinion, that is the best option. And the reason being is, we spent $350,000 on that bridge in the last year or so, getting it re-floored and checked out. As of right now, it's in pretty good shape, but it is going to have to be painted, and there are several places under there also that were plated in previous years, and some of those are bubbling up, and that's going to have to be checked and redone also. But if it's repainted then and we have to redo the floor, the last bid on that was over And that's $800,000 that the city does not have right now. It's kind of like having an albatross around your neck worrying about what's going to happen with that next. So, with that also being said, if the state does that, it is, it would be their bridge and it would be theirs to keep up forever and a day. So, that's really what we're kind of waiting on is which option there would be. I'm really not that opposed to the one at the park, but along with that, that would turn that over to us. So, when they turn that over to us, then there's another bridge that we would be obligated to keep up from now until whenever. So, financially speaking, just from that point along, to me, it really looks like the best choice is the trust bridge. But we will have to see, and that's supposed to be around, I believe, June, when we will actually really find out. But that's the last, you know, correspondence we've had with them, and that was the Mr. Waldrood that was here. So, that's just kind of the update that I have on that right now. So, Mr. Dennis, do you have that? The ordinance. Okay, the ordinance or the to establish fees for business license in the city of McAswell, Georgia, and for other purposes. Whereas the city of McAswell and incorporated municipality of the state of Georgia established the need and authority to grant business license inside the city limits of McAswell, Georgia. Whereas the city established a tax on all persons, firms, or corporations doing business in the city of McAswell. And whereas the city of McAswell acknowledges that costs have increased, and whereas the city of McAswell desires to modify the business license amount and provide that fee can be set by resolution. Therefore, it is hereby ordained by the governing authority of McAswell, city of McAswell, as follows. Section 1, definitions. The following words, terms, and phrases when used in this article shall have meaningful ascribed to them in the section except where context clearly indicates a different meaning. A, administration fees of the component of the occupation tax which approximates the reasonable cost of handling and processing the occupational tax. Location or office includes any structure or vehicle where a business profession or occupation is conducted but shall not include a temporary or construction worksite which serves a single customer or project or a vehicle used for sales and delivery by a business or practitioner of a professional. C, occupation tax means a tax levy for revenue purposes on persons, partnerships, cooperations, and other entities who are engaging in an occupational profession or business in the And ordinance of the city of McAswell, Georgia, to establish fees for that business. Page 2. D, occupation tax certified means a document issued by the city acknowledging payment for occupational tax and administrative fees. Section 2, an occupational tax is levied upon businesses and practitioners of professions and occupations where one or more locations of the city within the limits of the city. And pursuant of, to OCGA number 48-13-7, upon out-of-state businesses with no location or office in the city but with employees or agents engaging in substantial efforts to solicit business or serve customers or clients in the city, as follows, an annual business license fee of $100. Section 3, the administrative fee, in each occupational tax, there shall be included an administrative fee of $25. Section 4, the city shall require the payment of more than one occupational tax for each location, excuse me, of a business or practitioner. Section 5, a business practitioner subject to an occupational tax by another local government and claiming an exemption from or limitations to the occupational tax imposed by this article shall submit documents, documentation, as to the current payment of the occupational tax to the other local government and the basis of such tax. A, if a business or practitioner with no location or office in the state provides to the city proof of payment of the local businesses or occupational tax in another state which purports to the tax, business, businesses, or practitioner sale or services in this state, the business and practitioner shall be exempt from this occupational tax. B, if businesses or practitioners with no locations or office in this state shall only be required to pay occupational taxes to the local government in the state where the largest dollar volume of business is done or services performed by such businesses or practitioners. The limitations shall only apply when the business or practitioner has provided to the city satisfactory proof to the appability of this subsection. Section 6, if a business or practitioner commits his business in the city on or after July 1 in any year, the occupational tax for the remaining portion of the year shall be 50% of the tax imposed for the entire year. The administration fees shall not be reduced. Section 7, real estate brokers shall be subject to occupational tax pursuant to this article only if they maintain a principal or branch office in the city. Section 8, every business practitioner or location subject to payment of the occupational tax levy by this article shall display a current occupational tax certificate in place at the location for which certificate was issued. If the taxpayer does not have a permanent location within the city, the occupational tax certificate shall be shown to any police officer upon request. Section 9, any business required to obtain health permits, bonds, certificates of qualification, certificates of competency, or any other regulatory matter shall first before the issuance of an occupational tax certificate or a regulatory fee certificate show evidence of such qualifications. Any business required to, an annual application for continuance of the business shall do so before the registration is issued. Section 10, all ordinances, resolutions, and other acts or parts thereof in conflict with this ordinance are hereby repealed, provided, however, that any portion of said resolution or ordinance not in conflict herewith shall remain in force, in full force, and effective. The invalidity of any section clause or provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity with provision of this ordinance shall not affect the validity of any other part of this ordinance, which can be given effect without such invalid parts. Section 11, this ordinance shall be effective on the date of its approval by the council.
So, that's your first reading. Now, you can open the floor for any public comments concerning that.
Okay, do we have any questions about this ordinance? Anyone? Yes, ma'am.
I don't have a question. I do have a comment. I have a problem with the prices being raised, but what I have a problem with is the amount. When you're a small business, in December, I went ahead and set my budget for the 25 year, okay? And I know $125 may not be a lot for some, but when you're a small business and you've already got your budget done for the year, and you're expecting to pay just 25, which I did because I got under, I just slid right in, I just think that from $25 a year to $125 is a little excessive. And I would like for y'all to think about that, because I'm not the only little tiny business here. And that's what I have to say.
Well, it's written the tax actually went up $100. Excuse me. How it's written, the tax actually went up $100 because 25 is now an administrative fee. Is that how I'm hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
It used to be 25, like I stood to behind it and think 25. Yes.
There we go. I think we can rule this time. Okay, we'll go to the next order of business, which is to reappoint the city judge and the city attorney. I would need a motion and a second to do so.
Make a motion.
Second. All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, next is the standard operating resolution for the police department.
Okay, I'll read that. The resolution amending and supplementing the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual and for other purposes. Whereas the city of McAswell, Georgia has an active police department and a police chief. Whereas the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual was presented and approved and adopted on August 9, 2016, and amended on November 17. Whereas it is advantageous to the city of McAswell, Georgia, and the welfare of the residents of the city of McAswell, Georgia, that the city of McAswell amend and supplement the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual. Whereas the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual with an effective date of February 11, 2025, was presented at a regular council meeting and discussed thereat. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and council of the city of McAswell, Georgia, as follows. One, all of the, whereas clauses set forth above are hereby incorporated by reference. Two, the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual with an effective date of February 11, 2025, and incorporated by reference, is hereby adopted by the city. Three, the city of police shall, the chief of police shall have the ability to revise the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual as necessary to address new issues and changing law, except that chief of police shall not have the authority to unilaterally hire or fire nothing, and nothing in this resolution or the standard operations manual shall be construed to the contrary. Moreover, each time the chief of police revises the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual, he must provide notice to the council of the changes. Four, the chief of police is hereby authorized to take all action necessary to implement the McAswell Police Department Standard Operations Manual, adopting and approved on this, like, date of February 2025 at a regular meeting of the mayor and council of the city of McAswell. Need a motion? I make the motion that we adopt.
Call in favor? Okay. Next on the agenda is the vehicle purchase for the police department. That was Ms. Susan. I'm going to read that, please.
Okay, Mr. Mike Early came, comes before us, requesting the purchase of two new patrol vehicles. Several of our current patrol vehicles have reached high mileage and are experiencing increasing maintenance issues leading to high repair costs and potential reliability concerns. At this time, he's asking to purchase two new Ford F-150 police trucks to replace these aging vehicles. The trucks will enhance our department's ability to respond to emergencies, navigate various terrains, and provide our officers with the tools they need to perform their duties effectively. It is important to note that these purchases are being made using SPOS funds, specifically from the public safety portion, as I reallocated to the police department. This means that no money from the general fund is being used, ensuring that our regular operational budget remains intact while still allowing us to upgrade critical public safety resources. By utilizing these SPOS funds as intended, we are making a responsible financial decision that improves our police department's capabilities without placing further burden on our general fund or taxpayers. I need a motion.
Second. We have a second. All in favor? Any opposition?
And just to clarify, so you said I make a motion, right? Okay.
Okay, the motion carries. Okay, next is to change the city website banner to Main Street Media. I would need a motion to do that.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Okay, now we're back to old business and the RV ordinance.
So, I know that you guys asked me to change it and do it for the RV part. I've done that. Obviously, we're in the early stages of it. Nowhere near ready to present it to anyone for any sort of discussion. It's a very rough draft. Working on that and getting through that. But if any of the council members have any questions about it or anything of that nature, I'd be happy to answer them now. But again, it is a very rough draft and has changed, has changed directions from the previous ordinance based on the workshop.
I haven't had a chance to go through it yet, so.
I have to move on now.
Table it.
We would need a motion to do that.
I'll make a motion, table.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, any reports from the other business out there? Anyone know of anything? Okay, now we vote to the council members. Does anyone have anything to bring up?
Should we mention that next week we're having a meeting with TBA? Just, you can go ahead. You've been warned.
We have a meeting set up for next Tuesday at 10 or 11 o'clock. Ms. Perez from TBA is calling next week to tell us exactly what time that meeting will be. And this is to help us make some improvements and or finish some of the projects in the park that we were unable to complete at that time. So, we'll know a lot more about that and what they're going to be able to help us with in March. And we should be able to give you a pretty good report on how that looks from here. Okay, any?
Do you want to think about, should we mention some of the things we're planning on doing?
Yeah, go ahead.
It will depend on how much money we can get, of course, but we're thinking about in the upper end of the park, putting some bathrooms up there. So, when we have had things down there, it's a long ways for old people like myself to go to the bathroom when you got to go all the way down to the upper end of the park. So, we're going to put some bathrooms up there in the other end of the park. That's number one. Number two is pickleball. We're going to do at least one pickleball court. There might be some other things to do, but we're going to make sure we get one pickleball court. And then this next thing is, there is a big tree down there that's leaning out over the river. It's been, looked like lightning has struck it way back there, but it's busted. And we're going to cut that down and get rid of that and fill that corner up real good and fix it up nice. And the fourth thing is where the boats are being put in and out there. It's ramp. The lower side of that, the river is washing in against that and slowly taking the bank back. So, we plan to rip wrap the, where the ramp goes down in there, start back here somewhere on the ramp and rip wrap that around the side, put large rip wrap to start with on the left, and then finish it up with smaller stuff, try to catch that bank. And then the last thing, which is astronomical to me, but... And then the last thing, which is astronomical to me, but we would like to put the branch underground. There's a branch in the back of the park, if y'all have been down there and aware of it. So have contractors come and look at that. It's a big project, let's tell you the truth about it, it's going to cost a pretty good bit. But whenever that we meet with this lady, we're going to try to find out how much we can get, and then the order that I gave you, that's the order, we're going to start, take it as far as we go, and then if we can't go all the way to the end, we'll go as far as we can with it, and then come back at another time, so. That's what we got, maintenance. And one other thing, it's a little bit early, but April 20th is the Easter sunrise service down there, so we want everybody to put that number down in April 20. But I had the first one there last year, and it was really good, 125 or 30 people. I'd like to see it bigger than that, but anyway, so.
What time?
It's about 7:00, and I don't want to put that out exactly because last year I had a hard time with time changes, and I really had a hard time getting that time set, but it was beautiful because just as the sunrise service was just about over, that sun came up and it just filled that whole park so great. But this year, it's going to be 10 or 15 days later, so it'll be a little bit different. We'll get it out, though.
Okay, anyone else? Anyone else? Courtney, do you have anything?
I do not.
Denise, do you have anything? Mr. Michael.
Hey, that police vehicle, is that the second one, or is that the one we talked about a couple of months back? So it's going to be two?
We had 617 activity caused past 30 days. The Easter egg hunt that we put on every year will be April the 19th, 2:00 at the city park. We always have a good crowd of kids come after that, so try to remember that date. I know that's a ways away, but it'll be here, fully know it. One of my police officers, he is resigning at the end of the month. Him and his wife have opened up a business, and they're going to run that business, and he needs to go down to part time, so be actively trying to build his position hopefully soon. Our body cams will be installed in our new cars, or not our new cars, but in our cars Friday, with the base cams that y'all approved. July the 5th, which is a Saturday, will be our Independence Day celebration here in town. July the 4th is a Friday, that's when Blue Ridge does theirs, and we'll be doing ours the 5th, which is that Saturday. There will be a rodeo both nights, Friday and Saturday night as well, in town, so town will be packed out as usual, and this highway project's probably going to cause a lot of problems for us, but we'll deal with it the best we can. October the 30th is Halloween, that's a Thursday, and some different things want to happen this year. The train's going to bring kids down here from Blue Ridge to do trick or treat with the city, and that with the train ladies, so that will be exciting and something new. Light up Mackayville is November the 28th, that's the Friday after Thanksgiving, and the train's going to have a special for that as well, so that's something new. I had a variance request come into the city mayor and council, and the gentleman's here tonight by the name of Frank, and he bought the property beside Phil Wilson's house, if y'all want to know, and he plans on building a home there, correct, Frank?
Yes.
And he needs a variance so he can cut a road in, get to the property to build his house, so I'll let him speak his.
I brought just a plaque, kind of a plan, I'll put a plan on there. I have it on another home table at one time. I was here for four years. I live, and my family live in Ellicott, so we're out of town, there's some contact and information. So there's no access really to the lot from Hillcrest side. All the access is on the back, on the Green Street side, and there's no parking at all. So I proposed that, I mean, build a parking pad off of Green Street side, which will be enough for three quarters, 36 feet wide and 28 feet deep. And then we're going to build a house. The back of the lot's pretty steep, so right now there's a house there that tore down, but there's steps that go down, 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 where we don't want to deal with the steps, starting to get older, and want to be able to enter in from the main level on the back, and so the county informed me that the variance, the setback's a 15 feet on each side, so the lot's 50 feet, which would leave us with only a 20-foot wide house, which we'd like to have, we'd like to be able to go at least within seven feet of each side, if that's possible. And I got all the numbers here, but on the back, so if we come off of this road 28 feet, and then we'll have a space of about 12 feet, 20 to parking pad, and the house, which would leave us about around 30 feet off of the road in the front. And that can change, we don't really have a house planned yet, right now we just want to get a parking pad built so we can have a place to park when we go up there. And so these are trees, they're on the neighbor's side, and I haven't really, I haven't met him, just as a neighbor, but I haven't, we haven't really talked about him, they're pretty big trees, so they're coming over on our side, and I have, you know, talked with him about what he's willing, you know, let me do with that, but there's a possibility I may not be able to center the house on the lot, I may have to slide it over a little bit. And then this is the property next door, which is pretty much, pretty close to the property line. I think H-Act unit might be on property line. It's close, but we want to build a nice house there for a family.
And I believe that's the street you're talking about, is Green Street?
Yes, yes, sir. Yeah, it's, it's right there. So the entry from Green Street was up on the top side, and like I said, there's no, there's no parking, you can't wait for parking there at all right now, because it just kind of starts sloping off this pretty, pretty street.
Michael and myself rode up there and looked at that, and there's several driveways coming off of that street all the way down through there, and that's kindly the only, only place he's got there, which it was used there years ago, I can remember it, people parking there for years.
Devon Jones' property.
So I guess we would need a motion.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, ma'am.
It seems to me that it would make sense if the building plans were submitted to the council, and then the council could at that point in time make the variance specifically upon that request, and that way the two would be tied together.
Okay.
Is this, is this good enough?
Oh, I thought you just said you didn't have the building plans.
I don't have a, for the house.
That's what I think, that's just my suggestion, obviously it's the council. I just think that way then the council knows exactly where.
Yeah, because it was just, it's kind of a rough ball of impact, so I had really decided, you know, how we do the house, but the pad, the parking pad, I would like to try to get permission to move forward with that, because I have no way to, you know, go up there, nowhere to park, like literally, you're sitting halfway in the road, or you're sitting on a slope like this.
Is that where the variance is going to be, for the parking pad?
It will be on this, on this side, and then, you know, county said you have to do 50 foot from the center of the road down.
Yeah, that road's in there.
Are you, are you working on your building plans now? Are they almost completed?
No, no, I just bought the lot a couple weeks ago, last week, possibly, the 31st, but I'm trying to figure out, like, with the slope of that lot, how I want to do it, because, you know, there's a couple different things I want to do, but I want to enter, so this is the parking pad, and I want to be able to enter from that parking pad to the main level. And so that would put the, if that ends up being the plan, then the back of that, I call it the back, but really what we'll enter, the house would be 28 feet from Green Street, 28 feet off of Green Street. And I will get, you know, full set of plans on this, but the pads, parking, just a big park right now for us to be able to do anything, you know.
And what's the variance request on the parking?
The lot's 50 foot wide, so it'd be 36 feet wide, so it would be seven feet on each side. I have to leave this ready. Are you going to be doing a mortgage on the house?
It's a possibility, right now I'm trying, trying to do it.
I was a little confused about how the house was set in, in the lot, and they don't want to know quite a bit about that before they do a loan.
Yeah, I'm going to try to do a lot of it without a loan, so.
Okay.
I mean, I'm prepared to build a parking pad now, just to have a place to park, and then I'm looking for the plans for the house, and I don't mind submitting those, I'm not moving forward with the house, I just want to get a place to park. So when I do, when we do go there, to do whatever, we're not sitting in the road and then, you know. And this will be, you know, this will be, it'll be nice, and we'll make it nice, this will be a concrete, and this will be a retaining wall.
Terry, can you say, you want to look at it?
Yeah, it's about, honestly, that's about the only choice he has.
Yeah. Well, we can do anything if you need to park to start.
They have somewhere to put the materials, there's no place.
So you're going to build a retained wall and then fill it, backfill it to the plan?
Yeah, yeah, this wall, this wall probably could be anywhere from six to eight feet on the, on the lower side, and then you backfill it, gravel it, and, I mean, I'll, you know, like I said, it'll be nice, and I'll fix it where there's no drainage problem for anybody else and all that. I'm a builder, but lots of builders, but this, this is not, this is our personal, our personal house, so. But, you know, that's what I'd like to try to get accomplished, I'm ready to move forward with that, but the house, you know, I don't mind getting the full set of plans, bringing those here, again, submitting those, but I really have that permission, we've got tabs, so.
I'll make a motion to grant the variance on his parking pad.
All in favor? Any opposed?
Any abstaining?
Pass. And Michael, you have?
Really, 30. I promise you, you won't be disappointed. Good luck, ma'am.
No, that's all I have, thank you.
Any, anyone else? Before we open my pocket?
Yes, sir, I have nothing.
All right, okay, y'all's time now would be a public comment time.
So where were we on House 581?
We opted out. Now we're waiting on the others to vote, which I believe is some of us tonight, and one other is Thursday, I believe, something like that, so from what we hear, everybody's going to opt out, from what we're hearing. Yes, ma'am?
When we're going to get that sign about, you know, the speed limit where it's crooked, trying to fall down?
We'll get that fixed here.
When you did that, can you have it on both sides? The reason I'm saying that, we have got a lot of traffic in the last two weeks that you would think they were on 75 going through Atlanta. And one of them is a delivery truck that delivers propane. It's unreal. If he turns over, we're going to have some houses going down, because it's that close to the route.
Okay, any, yes, ma'am?
I know this is early, but I'm going to go ahead and ask it. So if it goes through and it's the, I call it the steel bridge, and that's the one that's chosen, is all of, I forgot the name of the road.
Bridge Street?
Yeah, thank you. Will all of Bridge Street have to be closed, or would it be closed past my driveway? It's going in my business. So am I going to be going out of business, basically? I'm Toccoa River Rustic Decor. I'm right there, I'm right there on, at the bridge. So, I mean.
We would really have to see which one they do, and, you know, then get back with all, all the business owners there, and make sure that they're taken care of.
Because it sounds like that's the way it's leaning, and I put a lot of time and heartache into that business.
Oh, yes, ma'am.
And I've been there for several years, and I'd hate to see my business go under because of that bridge. And if my customers cannot get to me.
Right.
So, I mean, and then you've got the people coming in on the train, they're not going to be able to come across there, or they'll put up more signage saying there's businesses on the other side, I mean, that kind of thing, so I just hope that y'all think all of that through, because it isn't, it's a concern.
Right, it absolutely is.
It's, I mean, I was sitting here thinking, when I heard that, I was thinking, what, what am I going to be able to do as a business owner if that happens? So I would greatly appreciate if you would keep me in the loop.
Well, I'm supposed to have another public meeting on it, isn't I?
June.
In June, okay.
They should give public access to your front door. Fix it off.
There's going to be a lot of issues, especially when they go replace that concrete bridge down here, when they build the tent bridge. Those steel beams on that concrete bridge go all the way, almost past the People's Bank, almost to where you cut to go down to the park underneath the asphalt, and they go all the way down almost to the entrance of the Conoco underneath the asphalt. All of that's got to be lifted up. So, I mean, this is a major project.
I mean, it's, it's not a good situation.
I know, and I'm not, I know, I'm not trying to give y'all a hard time, and I understand it's just something that has to be done, but.
I really don't.
I just hate to know I'm going to.
We've, we've talked to them about that already, the two gentlemen that were here before, or Susan and I were there, and we talked to them pretty, pretty hard about that, that we need to know what is going on, so we can make sure we give people a way to get back and forth across the river, because of all the businesses.
All right.
And yes, ma'am, we will, we'll let you know as soon as we know something. Sure will, and get your concerns and name and get them down here and show what problems we've got. Okay, any, anyone else? Yes, sir?
Hi, I'm Morris Klavansky, I'm from Stewart Highlands Development, and I'm here just to find out what has transpired with the water takeover from our developer, Bubba Gibbs. I was here in October, and you knew nothing about it.
So we've talked with Bubba, and we're trying to get. So we've talked with Bubba, and we're trying to get, get the contract finalized for that transition to take over. But he's, he's, I believe, from what I understand, he's done everything we've asked. I believe Davey's gonna go up there and maybe double check, make sure everything's good. But I would say sometime this year, we should be able to transition that.
Okay, and do you know if there's a contract or anything? Because I have been in touch with Tammy, and she had given my email to Davey, Davey answered.
Yeah, I know that Bubba has to get the property deeds for both properties where the pump stations are. That's kind of what we're waiting on right now, and he may have them by now?
Yeah, he has the one for the lower pump station, and the upper one is in the homeowners association.
Okay.
So it's just a matter of signing him over.
Yeah.
We need a contract before we do that.
Yeah, we'll get a contract.
I think it's more of a, there were some preconditions that Bubba had to do. And I think he's making sure that Bubba has done all those. If Bubba has done all those, then the city will take it over without the need for a contract.
Okay, so.
If Bubba's not done those, then the city won't take them over until he does those things.
So we should have something within the next few months, hopefully?
I, hopefully.
We're open to get it resolved by the middle, if not end of the year, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, everybody. My name is Sheila, and I'm the general manager at Twisted Tomato here in McHaysville and Borough Borough. I've been with the company for two years now. So I understand the flow of the business in McHaysville. And I'd really love for us to be part of bringing more money into McHaysville, especially after this meeting and hearing concerns and, you know, talk on the city needing more money. Looking at numbers from our restaurant, we do bring a good revenue. But a lot of the downfall of why people leave our restaurants is because we don't offer any liquor. So I'm here today to request a liquor license. You know, within our establishments, a lot of the pros are providing more jobs to locals. You know, without, right now, serving bartenders, we can have at least four spots to bring bartenders on, providing more jobs to locals, as well as more revenue for the city of McHaysville. That's a big portion of it. Right now, we're losing it on a daily basis to our neighbors in Copper Hill, Bar 21, JJ's. I've seen it every single day. I work six days a week, people just turning around, leaving because they can't get their one cocktail with their burger. So, you know, of course, with that, if it is approved, I will ensure the safety and regulations of having the liquor license, making sure that all our staff is trained properly, no overpouring, no underserving, you know, to minors, making sure everyone is trained. That way, we can ensure that we follow all state laws, city laws, and especially just bringing more money and more opportunity to the city that I absolutely love and plan to be here for many, many years. And just sitting here, listening to this side and your side, it's a main concern that we don't have a lot of money. And I think, you know, I managed a restaurant in Hiawassee. And just to give you an idea, we were bringing in $100,000 a month on just liquor. We do have tunis as well. We get knocked down because weddings want alcohol, and we're not booking those events because of it. So a lot of, you know, events will, you know, a lot of opportunity. So I'm hoping, you know, with us working together, we can bring that on, and yeah, that's all I got.
Okay, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, hold on, I got a question about this RV thing. Are we, since we're stalling on all this riding stuff and illegal stuff, are we putting a hold on, or backtracking it a year? If y'all do allow RVs in our residence? It should be backtracked at least a year or two.
We haven't reviewed the new ordinance written, so I can speak to it, I don't know if anybody else.
I know, but once it's read, you ain't gonna change it again. I mean, I know how that crap works, I mean, y'all.
Y'all initially discussed a grandfather, but.
I think the other question is, I don't know what, I'm not real sure what backtracking means, but there may be some confusion about allowing RVs. RVs are currently allowed. So the ordinance would be to, to restrict those. Right now, RVs are allowed in the city, as long as they comply with laws.
Restrict them or stop them?
The current ordinance that is on the.
Kind of the one we're working on. You said we don't have an ordinance.
That's what she's trying to tell you.
The ordinance that the council has is for RV parks, to restrict those. And to make regulations with those.
RV parks, as in a park with 15 trailers in it, camper?
We haven't, so that's all on the table right now.
No, but RV park, I ain't got nothing, you don't build an RV park, put RVs there. I mean, that's fine with me. But putting them around people's house is not fine. It brings our property value down. And you can call your own property appraiser and have them tell you the same thing. I mean, it's bad for a town, it's bad for a city. And y'all don't seem to care about the property value of people's house.
Well, right now, sir, we've got a ordinance to review, so we'll get back to you on that next, next meeting.
Let me ask you a question, sir. Have you always lived there where you live?
Uh, 15 years.
Where did you grow up?
In Florida. You gonna be one of those that tell me to move back to Florida?
What was your, as a, as a young person, did you live in a big, fine house?
No.
Did you live in a moderate house?
I lived in a trailer.
Okay, why did you live in a trailer? Tell me, you know, I know, I know the answer. What we're worried about, sir, is the people, the citizens of McHaysville, not individuals. That's what, now I say we, okay, go back, folks.
You say not individuals, but at our last meeting, the last meeting I was at, sorry, I missed the last one. The mayor was worried about one individual, losing her place, she ain't got no place to go.
That was a single woman with children, I understand.
Yeah.
Maybe she doesn't have children, I don't know, but she was a single woman. And the reason that she.
She's got a boyfriend.
Y'all complained about the tarp. And the reason that she put the tarp over, her statement was that she set her trailer up level, and it should have been tilted a little bit. And when she rolled out her bed, that allowed the water to drain back in. Now, wouldn't you think it would be reasonable of a mayor or any man that lived in the neighborhood to worry about somebody like that?
How about the man that lives with her?
Yeah, the man that lives with her should worry about that. I mean, I never had people hand me stuff, and I never asked for people to hand me stuff.
Well, just to be clear, the city didn't hand her anything. The city didn't hand her anything, everything was donated. No city time, no city money.
You know, the mayor initiated it. So any camper that comes in here with a bad roof, the mayor should initiate some volunteers to go fix their roof. I mean, he set the preference.
Sir, we're gonna disagree, but go ahead and say your piece, and we can go in the meeting.
All right, that's how it is in here. You ignore when something not going quite your way, we'll get back to it.
No, we're not, sir. We're giving you every opportunity.
To speak.
To speak.
I know, I can listen to you and let it go out one ear, and that's what y'all do. Y'all don't care about the homeowner's value going down, or even the city's value going down, letting campers. If you allow campers, you're gonna say, I'm guessing two, because the mayor's got two campers in his house. So I'm guessing we're gonna at least, at least allow two. Am I not right? I mean, that's already in your head. And so what if everybody puts two campers in their yards? What's that gonna do to our town? What if they put one camper in their yard and let someone live in it? Because they're having a hard time, they don't wanna work. They were living off the system before, now they don't want to. You know, to me, someone that lives in a camper is just trying to avoid the real world. I mean, you, you could try. Let's build housing.
All right, let's build housing. You get us, you get us the money.
Yous right here have got plenty of property to build houses.
Where's the money gonna come from? You tell me.
Have Yus put up some nice, like that one right next to me.
That's not what we're talking about. You're talking about building housing.
Well, how many businesses in this town, and we just went up 100 bucks on them?
That's not what we're talking about. You're getting, you tell me where's the money gonna come from?
All those taxes don't come from it?
To do public housing, you tell me that.
But your tax money wouldn't pay for some of that? So you don't wanna really help the lower people?
So you want us to raise the taxes enough to get public housing?
I'd be happy to do that.
I would.
No, you would?
I would.
There's no way you, no, sir, you couldn't afford it.
Well, you just ran us $100 on my taxes for business, starting this year, or next year, sorry.
Well, I'm sorry we agreed to disagree, but you're, you're talking about things that are not.
Not feasible?
Exactly.
Because you don't care to raise money for that. I mean, you can raise the money for that bridge, put that bridge of money into houses.
We didn't raise the money for the bridge, sir.
You're not gonna pay for that?
The state of Georgia.
If they choose to go that route, if they go the other, because you want them to go that route.
There's a whole lot of ifs in life, there's a whole lot of them. And I've made my share of ifs and made my mistake.
And I'm trying to express my ifs and likes, too.
Well, you have, and we gave you ample time.
And do you care?
Not really, I do not.
That's what I thought, so you don't care about my property value? Say it out loud, you do not care about my property value?
That is your words, I did not say that.
You just said that, you don't care.
I'm not worried about.
The property value of my house.
What you do with your own place, sir, is your own business.
All right, and you don't care about property value?
I don't, I don't have anything to do with the property values. That's done by the county association. You're asking me, and I'm telling you.
I'm asking you if you care about the property value of any house in this town. Why can't you just answer, yes or none?
Well. Do you have a public comment? Is there a time limit on that?
I think you said your piece, we all heard it, okay? We got it.
Oh, yeah.
We got it.
You're a citizen of this town.
Yep, that's why I'm here.
You live in the city?
That's exactly right.
Okay. And you're all right with having campers all over the place?
Listen, you said your piece, you got it. Okay. There you go, she said no.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Is there a motion?
Meeting adjourned.
We adjourned.
My excuse, I'm probably your crosshairs, you name it. I didn't say anything.
Jesus, hurt everybody else, drinking alcohol.
Maybe he needs a little.